I'm Neil Stokes. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Albany County. Tonight's event is being co-sponsored by the League, the Council of Albany Neighborhood Associations, Capital District Latinos, Westminster Presbyterian Church, Trinity United Methodist Church, First Presbyterian Church, and Emmanuel Baptist Church. The League is a nonpartisan volunteer citizen organization that promotes the informed and active participation of citizens in government and works to increase understanding of major public policy issues. The League neither supports nor opposes candidates or political parties. The League has a long tradition, over 100 years, of sponsoring candidate events to aid in educating the electorate so that on Election Day, voters will be able to make an informed decision at the polls. This event is an example of our work. The candidates for the Sixth Ward are Jeff Mayo, Gabriella Romero, and Susan Pedo. You all received the rules via email, but let me repeat them once more. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statement, two minutes to answer each question, and two minutes for your closing statement. You will have a red card that will buy you a 30-second rebuttal after all candidates have spoken on that question. It can only be used once, so use it wisely. Candidate responses will be in rotating order, and all answers will be time limited. Candidates will have an opportunity to respond to the same question. To the listeners, to vote in a primary in New York State, you must be a registered voter. You must be enrolled in a party. Your party must be holding a primary. You will only be voting for those candidates running on your party's line. Early voting is June 12 through 22. For more information about voting process and about candidates running in the June 22 primary, go to our voter information website, vote411.org. If you live in a district that is holding a primary, type in your address and information will appear. Other places to receive information on voting are the Albany County and New York State Boards of Elections website. This forum is being recorded locally and can be viewed on the League of Women Voters YouTube page and through a link on our website and on the Albany Channel 1301. Now I will proceed with the first question to... Oops. Excuse me just a minute. Gabriella. Yeah, I got it right that time. Gabriella, I'm not going to proceed with the first question. I'm going to ask you to give us your opening statements. You have two minutes.
Great, thank you Neil. So hi everyone, my name is Gabriella Romero, and I am running to represent the Sixth Ward on Albany's Common Council next year. By way of a quick introduction, I'm currently an attorney in the Albany County Public Defender's Office, and I'm one of the lucky ones that gets to wake up every day really invigorated and excited about my work. But it's also this work that's allowed me to be very familiar with specific ideas or specific concepts that need to be reformed in our city and in our city's infrastructure. It's the criminalization of poverty, mental illness, substance use, housing insecurity, and food insecurity. It's also these very specific cracks in our system, the way our city defines affordability in housing, the way we treat people that require emergency housing and emergency shelter. It's these issues that I've thought about forever, but within my work as a public defender have really shown me these issues and what they... Sorry for the background noise, too, if you can hear that. It's these... My work in the Public Defender's Office, that's allowed me to identify these issues. But my advocacy and my reason for running really came to a head last summer with the social justice movements that have been around forever, but came to such a head with the murder of George Floyd. And like so many of you, I felt pulled viscerally to do something more in my community. So it started off by attending protests and teach-ins and helping out with know your rights presentations and with a group of family and friends and mentors and neighbors. I decided that I needed to get more involvement to my community, and it manifested itself by running for this specific seat. I'm really excited to do this. I love this city. I was born here. I love this neighborhood, and that's why I'm running. And I'm so excited to be here to tell you guys a little bit more about me and what I've been. Thanks.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to Jeff.
Thanks Neil. Hi, I'm Jeff Mayo. Obviously, running for Albany Common Council in the Sixth Ward. I've dedicated my life to helping others. That's what my passion is. And I hope to continue to do that as a member of the Albany Common Council. I've lived in the Sixth Ward for about a decade. I've lived on Lark Street for two years as a renter, and I've lived for over seven years on Chestnut Street as a homeowner. I love our neighborhood, and I'm a strong believer in public service. I've dedicated my life to serving marginalized communities and trying to help people, as I mentioned. I spent about five years working on the streets of Albany doing homeless outreach, and then I went to law school and became a legal aid attorney representing tenants facing eviction. I'm now a civil rights attorney for people with mental illness and developmental disabilities, and am very fortunate and grateful that I'm able to continue to help people in my career every day. I've served on the Board of United Tenants of Albany, and during the pandemic, I've continued to volunteer at United Tenants as well as at Joseph's House and Shelter and delivering groceries to people receiving cancer treatment. I just really like to be as involved as I can in my community, and that's what I've done for about 15 years. So I see this run for office as a way to continue to serve others, but also as a way to implement on a systemic level these issues that I've been working on directly for the last 15 years: housing, code enforcement, mental illness, helping people to age in place, code enforcement. And as a council member, I promise to work tirelessly to implement policies, introduce legislation that will benefit our community, and I'll continue to devote myself to helping others, which is what drives me. I want my service on the council to reflect my dedication to public service and my love for my community. Thank you.
Thank you Jeff. And we'll move on to Susan.
Hi, my name is Susan Pedo, and I am running for Albany Common Council because our city is at a turning point with two crises: systemic racism and COVID recovery. Five of the 15 people who currently serve on the Albany Common Council are stepping down after this term. So our next Common Council member must be knowledgeable, experienced, committed, and ready to go. That person must know the community, government process, and the issues that are important to the Sixth Ward and the City of Albany. My experience in economic development and community development, advocacy in social justice, and state and local government will help to serve me, to represent the Sixth Ward, and be a force to bring our city together to address the challenges that we face right now. I am the Vice Chair of the City's Industrial Development Agency and serve on the Board of Capitalize Albany Corporation. And I'm the former Economic Development Director for Albany County. I also served as Vice President of Planned Parenthood statewide advocacy organization, and I currently teach at the University at Albany's School of Business. I'm a founding board member of the Red Bookshelf and a board member and mentor at Rockefeller College's Center for Women in Government and Civil Society. I've lived in the Sixth Ward for 25 years, first as a renter on Lark Street and now as a homeowner on Lancaster Street. When I first moved to the Sixth Ward, there were very few families living here. But I loved this community, and I knew that I wanted my family to enjoy this diverse, walkable, active neighborhood that I had come to love. I raised two children here who attended Albany Public Schools and are proud Falcon soccer and lacrosse players. I was a PTA president and also worked as the Chair of the New York State PTA's Legislative Committee. I'm committed to our community and to bringing people from all over our city together to create an even better Albany.
Thank you Susan. And now I'm going to ask the first question. I was a little premature before. And so the first question is going to go to Jeff. And it can be asked, it will be answered by each of you, but Jeff gets to go first. To serve on the Common Council, how are you going to balance the heavy responsibilities of serving your constituents with other commitments in your life, such as your other employment and family responsibilities?
Sure. When I was considering running for Common Council, my first consideration was, will I be able to devote myself to this in a way that is fair to my constituents, that allows me to serve this community in a way that I believe it deserves to be served and represented? And I, after giving it some thought, came to the conclusion that, yes, this is something that I can take on. This is something that I can find room for in my life. I've been involved in my community for 15 years, very active in my community in a variety of ways. And I see this potential of serving on the Common Council as an extension of the work I've already done throughout my life. So I think I will have to give up some of my current extracurriculars and really devote myself to the work on the Common Council. And that's fine. Otherwise, I have a partner, Deanna, and Dog Yeti, and they are, of course, my loves. And, you know, I won't let them take a backseat either. But I do feel confident I'll be able to meet the responsibilities and the expectations of people here in the Sixth Ward. Thank you.
Thank you Jeff. Susan. Would you like me to repeat the question? Are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
So I have always balanced work, family, and a lot of additional activities. I've been very involved in our local community, our city, and state and national government. So I'm quite used to balancing a lot of different things at one time. However, if elected to the Albany Common Council, that would have to become a priority. And I have already discussed with several of the boards on which I sit that I would be stepping down, not only because of the time constraints, but also because of the decision-making processes that several of the quasi-governmental agencies on which I serve have responsibilities that could even vaguely be construed as a conflict of interest. So both in the interest of making sure that my priority is on representing the people of the City of Albany and to avoid conflict of interest, I would be reining in some of my activities. And when I think about representing the community and the city, I'm very much including my family in that. And so I think my family is very supportive of this effort and would also benefit from the skills that I would bring to this job.
Thank you Susan. Gabriella.
Thanks. So it would be a pleasure and an honor to serve and represent the Sixth Ward on the Common Council. I would have no problem balancing my work as a public defender or my family commitments in this position. And if anything, my family has always been extremely supportive of me, very traditional Puerto Rican family values. So they will be beside me, behind me, around me for the entirety of my four years, the way they've been next to me for the entirety of this campaign. So I don't think there will be any issue in balancing my work as a public defender, my community work, and my work on the Common Council.
Okay, thank you so much. So question number two, we're going to start with Susan. And the question is, describe your leadership style. Will it differ from that displayed by the current Albany Common Council? If so, how will it differ?
My leadership style is collaborative. I like to bring people together to make sure that all stakeholders are involved in making the decisions that will affect their lives. As the Vice President of Family Planning Advocates of New York State, which is Planned Parenthood statewide advocacy organization, we dealt with women and families and people from all over the state who had many different opinions about how reproductive rights and health should be administered by the state, how sex ed should be taught to our children, and how we can best ensure the health of all of New York State's citizens. That meant a lot of collaboration with people from all parts of the state, and that was before Zoom. So I traveled a great deal in that job, bringing together people from many different communities and really trying to listen to their opinions and their needs so that we would get the best possible outcome. Beyond listening, one thing that I learned and will definitely bring to the Common Council is the importance of also letting and enabling and supporting the leadership of people who have lived experience. Listening is not enough. We must support people of color, people of many different races, people of many different backgrounds in actively resolving the issues that their communities face and in taking the leadership to make their communities even better places.
Thank you. Next is Gabriella. Same question.
Could you repeat the question, actually?
Describe your leadership style. Will it differ from that displayed by the current Albany Common Council? If so, how will it differ?
I would describe my leadership style as strong and unapologetic on things that matter, especially when the issues aren't being spoken about. Something that I personally have tried to be as outspoken as possible about is this ban on use of tear gas. And I think in my comments, it's very clear that when there's something that's really passionate to me, I need to speak out about it, and that's how I believe. With that being said, I'm very used to collaborating in an adversarial system or just collaborating in a group of people. Being a public defender isn't just about being a strong, unapologetic leader, although that's undoubtedly a main component of it, but it's working with the system to figure out something that's right for everyone. So although undoubtedly, I'm saying this person cannot go to prison, but it's explaining why and getting everyone else to also agree with me. So will it differ from the current Common Council? I think there's a lot that happens behind the scenes that we don't see on our Common Council meetings. We're watching a group of people on Zoom right now, and although there are some voices that are speaking out, I think I would be undoubtedly one of the louder, maybe more contentious voices, and I'm not going to back down from that. But at the same time, I think I would also be listening and learning, just like many of the Common Council members now have been doing and are continuing to do. So something that Susan actually touched on, which I think is really important in a leader, is listening to people that have an experience that's different from yours. So if there's an issue that we're speaking about, again, kind of like the tear gas ban right now, it's speaking to people that were affected by this issue. I can't assume that this piece of legislation, that I know everything about everything. So speaking to people that are going to have a direct impact on the legislation that we're passing is always going to be really important to me, in addition to seeing what the Sixth Ward community itself also thinks.
Thank you so much. Jeff.
So a couple of weeks ago, I had a young woman in the Ward reach out to me and ask if she could interview me as part of a paper she had to write on leadership. She had to interview a local leader, and she had to write a paper for one of her college classes. I said, sure, but, you know, I just want to forewarn you, I'm not exactly a philosopher. I'm not going to, I think, blow your mind with any great insights here, but I'm certainly happy to talk. And, you know, really what I focused on and what I tried to convey during that meeting was that I see leadership as, for me anyway, an opportunity to help people and serve the community. I want to be useful. I want to be useful every day. I think that's part of why we are all here on this earth, is to be useful to others. Like I said, recovering from alcoholism, I've been sober about 10 years. And what I've learned in recovery and in sobriety has informed a lot of my ideals and my approach to life and to leadership. I have to remain humble. I know that if I get arrogant or think I know everything, it's a risk factor for relapse. So really, I just try to do the next right thing, and I try to work with people, listen to people. I'm a better listener than a speaker. And the student that I met with ended up putting a name from one of her textbooks to my leadership style, and it's apparently servant leadership. So for whatever that's worth.
Thank you. Our third question will begin with Gabriella. What steps will you take to make sure you're listening and advocating for our residents in the Sixth Ward regardless of race, class, sexual orientation, gender identity, et cetera?
Well, the way you listen to people is that you go to them where they are and you listen to what they have to say. I've been doing that for the entirety of the campaign, and that's what I do as a leader already and what I do in my own work. From the beginning, I started this thing called Stoop Chats, where I'll meet you on your stoop and we'll talk. And when it was really cold out, you'd bring some hot cocoa. And I've loved that. That has been the most fun part of this campaign, is sitting on people's stoops and sometimes talking about the campaign, but really just listening to them and the stories that they have and sharing experiences about why we love this neighborhood and why we love the city. So when you ask, how am I going to provide a listening opportunity for people? It's by holding potentially regular stoop forums or holding regular... I don't know the right word for it, but like an office hour type situation where it's more than just a phone call, it's more than just an email. It's maybe me sitting outside of stacks on Sunday mornings and allowing people to stop by and say, hey Gabriella, there's this issue on Chestnut, and this... I can't even think. But like, if any problem that anyone has, that they could come to me with it. And that's the type of leader I want to be, someone that's open, that will sit and listen to someone, and they know that they'll always be able to access me and that I'll listen to them and I'll do the research and I'll do the work. And throughout this campaign, people have come to me with issues. I've got a call today with someone whose son was missing, and he didn't know what to do. And I said, well, you file a missing persons report. What specific jurisdiction do you think he's in? And although that was undoubtedly more criminal justice specific, I want to be that person for people. I really see a Common Council woman as an advocate, but also just like a strong listener. So I hope that answers your question. But by providing an ear, an open and honest ear to people, that's how you listen.
Thank you so much. Jeff? Same question?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
I can do that. What steps will you take to make sure you're listening and advocating for our residents in the Sixth Ward regardless of race, class, sexual orientation, gender identity, et cetera?
Well, I think it's always better to listen than to try to, I don't know, put on some kind of an act or try to tell people what I think they should be doing. Like I mentioned, I'm a better listener than I am a public speaker. And that, I think, has been really useful for me, not only in this campaign, but throughout my life, throughout my career as an attorney, throughout my career in homeless services. And I think as a result of my willingness and ability to listen, I've generated some tremendous support in the community. Nearly every community leader in the Sixth Ward has supported my candidacy, and I'm very proud of that. And I want to continue to, like I said, listen and work with people. And it's important to be teachable, it's important to be humble. I think my favorite part about this campaign is, you know, I've knocked on everybody's door multiple times, and everybody always wants to teach me something. And I really appreciate that. I appreciate the ability to learn something, and I appreciate when people get passionate and excited about something that they want to share with me. And yeah, that's it.
Thank you so much. Susan.
Inclusive collaborative leadership is essential for a success on the Albany Common Council. Unfortunately, in the Sixth Ward, people let you know how they feel. People don't hold back here. They come to you when they have a problem. They come to you when they see a positive outcome, and they are willing to work towards solutions. That doesn't mean that that's the only way that we can ensure that voices are heard. So we do need to proactively be in the community, go to the many different groups that meet and are housed here in the Sixth Ward. We are the proud home of many of the Black Lives Matter marches that took place over the past year and a half, and we were very proud to be able to participate in those. We are the home of In Our Own Voices on Lark Street. We are the home of the Pride Center. And we have many people here who live in the Sixth Ward because of these opportunities to collaborate and to find supportive environments to advance those issues that are important to them. I've also, through the campaign, been holding Saturdays on the stoop at my home on Saturday mornings. And this Saturday, former Albany City Treasurer and Sixth Ward Common Council Member Nancy Burton will be joining us on the stoop. And Nancy was an insurgent who fought for the rights of people not only in the Sixth Ward, but throughout the City of Albany. So I would hope to emulate some of the strategies that she utilized as a Common Council member and will continue to work to make sure that we have inclusive leadership and work groups.
Thank you. Question number four, we will start with Jeff. And it's, as a Common Council member, what will be the focus of your first 100 days in office?
I didn't think that applied to local elected officials. I thought that was just...
Well, one of your neighbors put it on the sheet, so we're asking it.
I'm sorry, I find that very funny.
Yeah, it is fun.
I mean, let's face it, there's going to be a learning curve, no matter who you are. There's going to be a learning curve in terms of figuring out, you know, procedural issues, figuring out who within city departments you need to talk to to get things done, figuring out who you can collaborate with and build alliances with on the Common Council in terms of our colleagues. So my first 100 days, I want to learn as much as possible. I want to get to know as many people in city government as possible. And I think that there may be the opportunity to introduce some legislation. but I don't want to come in on the first day with a stack of bills and just say, here, I want these, I want these to be introduced. Like I said, I, I want to get to know my, my colleagues on the council and see where we can, we can build some consensus and where we can build some coalitions so that we can, we can advance some of the legislation that I have in mind. And having that buy-in and not going it alone is tremendously important in any legislative setting. So my first hundred days, I don't know, I don't imagine anybody's going to be writing a, a history book about my, my first hundred days in office, but I'll, I'll do the best I can.
Thank you. Gabriella?
I think I would probably, in a very similar way to Jeff, listen as much as I possibly can as, for the first, maybe beyond the first hundred days. There's so much to learn and I've already identified the leaders that you need to learn from within city government, the code enforcement department with historical preservation areas. And so it's really scheduling a lot of meetings. I'd imagine a lot of phone calls, a lot of listening and really just, just figuring out what exactly can we do from our city officials? And with all of these groups that I've, I've kind of partnered with in this campaign as well. I'm, I'm so honored. I'm really humbled by the endorsements that this campaign has received. And, and what endorsement means is that you collaborate with them to pass progressive legislation. So in partnering with the Working Families Party, DSA, Citizen Action, Youth Political Alliance, in addition to the county legislators from all, pretty much all the surrounding area of the sixth ward, in addition to the really most progressive movers and shakers in our city, Matt Toparowski, Mark Michler, and the incomparable Barbara Smith, working with these people and sitting down and saying, all right, guys, we did it. Now what's next? How are we going to do this? So working with them and kind of just moving, moving forward, continuing to do the work that we've done by, by listening to people, holding these regular forums, like I kind of mentioned before, and doing that same work with my endorsements with the people of the sixth ward, celebrating undoubtedly for maybe the first 10 days and then saying, let's get to work.
Thank you. Susan?
I have three priorities for my first hundred days in office. And the first issue that I think we will be dealing with when the new common counselor takes office will be police reform. At this point in time, the Police Reform Task Force and Reinvention Collaborative has produced a document that is much more of a report than an actual action plan. And at the rate that we're going, there is a lot of conflicting information in that report at this point in time. And there's a lot of really great ideas as well. And to cull through that and make sure that we have an action plan that has action steps, the persons who are responsible for carrying that out and making sure that we have a way to evaluate those components of the plan will be really important for the next common council member from the sixth ward. The second thing that I will focus on is stabilizing our small businesses, particularly on Lark Street and also our city budget, which takes immediately collaborate with the New York State budget process to ensure that we have the funding that we need. Finally, I will work to sustain our natural and built environments. Here in the sixth ward, we have a beautiful historic setting with gorgeous old buildings and homes as well as Washington Park and a number of other pocket parks. It makes our ward very attractive to visitors and we are very welcoming to them. However, there's a balance to be struck between those who visit our community and those who live here to ensure that both can enjoy all that the sixth ward has to offer.
Thank you. And question number five, we're going to start with Gabriella. And the question is, what do you see as the greatest challenges facing neighborhoods in your ward? Please prioritize those that you plan to address if elected.
I would say the greatest priority to the sixth ward, the greatest priorities to the sixth ward would include walkability and accessibility of our streets, reforming our police department and making sure that the way our, our neighborhood in our city sees public safety is changed. Although that's undoubtedly a city issue, that's also a six-fourty issue and maybe I'll have time to get into that. And addressing our trash problem. And I'll start with the quickest and maybe you'll have time for the rest too. Every single person, when they say, oh, I, I don't care about anything like in our neighborhood, I'm like, you do. Let's talk about it. Everything's affected by local government. And if you push them a little bit, everyone says that the trash in the sixth ward is a problem. And so I've been really clear about this, that the best way to attract, to address quality of life issues is undoubtedly not with the punitive police type measure. It's with community collaboration and creating more of a neighborhood and family type environment. So allowing for regular community cleanups has a scientific real effect on the community. And that's something that I'm really excited to continue for the next four years, even if I'm not elected. I've, I've made them a part of my regular Sunday routine, so I'm excited about that. The other priorities that I mentioned, which is walkability and accessibility and police and public safety. With walkability and accessibility, the Lark Street Vialization Plan is going to allow for a new design of our Lark Street corridor. But the Washington Park Traffic Study is also going to give us really, really wonderful data about what we specifically can do to make that safer. That's a big priority personally to me as a runner. Driving through the Washington Park area is something, when I personally drive, I'm always driving to people, not less. I would love for that to be me, like my motto as a candidate. But as a runner, it's kind of terrifying for me. As I'm running, I'm almost always kind of hit with random, almost hit with random speeding cars. So addressing pedestrian safety is really important within the Washington Park area and the outside areas as well within the sixth ward. And I see that I don't have enough time, but we will undoubtedly talk about police and public safety later.
Yeah, thank you very much. Jeff?
So the, the top priorities for the ward?
Okay, okay.
Okay. So I, I think one I hear from just about everybody in the ward is quality of life. People are, who live here are frustrated by the, the loud motorcycles, by the ATVs, by the dirt bikes. Not just their noise, but their, their seeming disregard for, for pedestrian safety. You know, they, they drive up on the sidewalk. They don't obey traffic signals. So that along with, along with trash, along with panhandling, these are, these are issues that I hear, I would say the most about from, from people here in the, in the, in the community. I also want to focus on code enforcement. I've always wanted to see Albany with a stronger code enforcement department. I've been in plenty of other cities where you just don't have the kinds of, of housing violations like you see in Albany. And all it takes is one or two problem properties on the block to really wreak havoc on a neighborhood. And having stronger code enforcement would be to the benefit of not only the tenants in those buildings, but also the, the neighbors and, and the rest of the community. Finally, pedestrian issues I think are, are paramount here in the sixth ward. Part of why I've lived here for almost a decade is, is the walkability. Walkable Albany recently released candidate scores from a questionnaire that we took. And I, I'm proud to say I was the only candidate in the city of Albany to receive an A plus rating from Walkable Albany. So continuing to focus on pedestrian issues and making sure that we have a, a walkable, livable community is very important to me.
Thank you so much. Susan?
I mentioned police reform before. I'd like to break down some of these steps and some of the things that are very specific to the sixth ward of Albany. As I walk, walk door to door, I did hear a very consistent concern that people who called the Albany Police Department often felt disregarded and disrespected, often from the moment that they called the station. And things often seem to get worse when the officers arrive on the scene. There are also people who've had good experiences, and this is not to say that this is standard practice, but I think that our police department needs a lot of training about how to deal with the residents of the city of Albany, both here in the sixth ward and throughout the city, as we've seen from the experiences of the past year. There have been some initial efforts made to engage our police officers in dialogue, often one-on-one dialogue with people who have different experiences than they do. So I think that we are starting to develop that understanding. But we really need to get back to that model of service because that's what our officers are here for. And the people of the sixth ward feel that they need to be respected as all residents in our community deserve. Secondly, another recommendation of the report that I think we can all agree on is to make sure that we are adjusting who responds to 911 calls and calls to the station so that calls can be better hand answered by a crisis manager or a social worker are dealt with on a different level than those that would be responded to by a police officer with a gun, who can often actually exacerbate a negative situation in many cases. So we will need to do reorganization. We will need to do training. And we will need to do a lot of exploration of how our police are funded and organized.
Thank you so much. We're going to go on to question number six. And I've heard some things already coming from you guys that SADA covers this, so you'll get to repeat it probably. Addressing quality of life issues, trash, graffiti, residential parking in a timely manner will help you build trust with your constituents. What steps will you take to address these issues and build trust with sixth ward residents? And we're going to start with Jeff.
Sure. Those are, are like I said, persistent issues and persistent sources of frustration for those of us who've, who've lived in the sixth ward for, for a while. And I, I think there are, there are a number of, of issues that need to be looked at and worked on. I, I liked what Susan had to say in terms of, you know, people feeling like calling the APD is an exercise in futility. That if people call the police to try to help with something, they're, they're not going to be willing to or they're going to come and then, then they're, they're not going to take a report and they're going to just pull you off. And I think that there needs to be a real culture shift there. And part of what I want to see happen is to have people who are, are social workers, mental health professionals who are trained to deal with, with people who are experiencing mental illness, addiction, any kind of substance abuse, who may be in some kind of a, a, a personal crisis. And instead of having armed officers respond to those calls, have mental health professionals deal with that. I did something close to that work when I, I worked on the Homeless Action Committee Outreach Van for, for five years. And it's very evident when you see the difference between an armed officer responding and someone who is, is trained in dealing with that sort of population and getting that under control. I think we, we need more garbage cans. I think we need to get trash cans back on Dove Street. I've heard that from a number of people. You can walk from Lark Street to the Plaza and good luck finding a trash can anywhere. And again, I just hope for, for better cooperation, better community relations between the sixth ward and the Albany Police Department so that we can try to rectify some of these issues.
Okay. Thank you so much. Susan?
So we've got a number of quality of life issues that we've all heard as we've been going door to door. One that is urgent, that needs urgent action right now as the state legislative session is coming to an end is our zoned parking. We have had a parking permit system here in Albany for a number of years. It took a long time and a lot of community cooperation to get that operative and to get the state to agree to let us have that system. And it is on the line every time it has to come up before the New York State Legislature for renewal. And that's the situation that we're in right now. So we have our current common council member, Richard Conti, who was one of the people who initially pushed this through, working very hard on this with our state representatives, Pat Fahey, John McDonald, and Senator Neil Breslin, to ensure that this gets through before the end of the year, the end of the legislative year, which is in just a matter of days. The difference that permit parking, parking made for families in this community in particular and for people with physical restrictions was apparent within weeks of it being passed. It enabled people with small children who needed to come home from work and take a child to the doctor to be able to do that without losing a full day of work. It enabled people with physical limitations to stay in their homes for longer periods of time because they didn't necessarily have to park a mile away or drive around for several hours looking for a, a parking spot. We do still have parking challenges. There is no doubt about it. But the parking permit system that we have right now is very important. And we all need to raise our voices to ensure that the state legislature addresses that this week.
Thank you. Gabriella?
I might have touched on this earlier, but I really want to emphasize that the best way to handle quality of life issues is not through the police department at all. I kind of mentioned my, my trash policy earlier, but increasing trash receptacles is also something that's really important, but also increasing bags and signs for people to pick up their dog waste. That is an unbelievable, but very prevalent issue in our ward. And it shouldn't be, but the amount of dog waste and even once dog waste isn't bags, just bags of dog waste that is around our downtown area is astonishing to me. So some people have gone so far as to take chalk and like draw circles around it. And that was like a wonderful little display on, on one of the side streets, but we can't all do that. I think providing more signs and bags, like I said, education and opportunity for people to handle those would be, would be really wonderful. And that would be a good first step there. And another quality of life issue is the accessibility of our streets. We have a very beautiful cobblestone street component to the sixth ward that I, I really, really love and, and, and I adore. And it's a great traffic calming measure. But if we, if we're going to have it, we need to make sure that it's kept up to date and that it's walkable. There are areas of J Street that are, that are hard for even a car to drive through, let alone someone to walk on it. So that's just a really dramatic example, but there's a, there's sidewalks that are also not walkable and, and pedestrian friendly that I think also need to be addressed. I would like, I would love to see the sixth ward have funding for those small little quality of life issues. The bumps on the road, the, the holes in the sidewalks, the ability to, the dog poop bags and boxes, increasing trash receptacles are things that are really important that I would really, really support.
Thank you. And we're moving right along. We have question number seven. And that one's gonna, Sharon's gonna answer that one first. And it reads, residents in the city of Albany are often priced out due to increase in housing costs. What strategies would you employ to encourage them to stay and invest in the city as long-term residents?
Albany has been working hard. Albany has been working hard to make progress regarding residential conversion downtown and making sure that affordable housing is part of that initiative. Just this morning, I was at the ribbon cutting for the Clinton Avenue Apartments, which brought 240 new units of low-income and affordable housing online in the Arbor Hill neighborhood. This project was supported by the City of Albany IDA, in which I serve on the board, and it was one of the most fulfilling projects that we've worked on in some time. Phase one is ready to go. People are moving in already. They are obtaining services through DePaul. They have 24-hour response for maintenance through the maintenance company that has been brought in to work with the owners of that, of those facilities. It is a scatter site, so the houses are distributed over about a one-mile length of Clinton Avenue. But it is bringing the community together and preparing us for phase two of the Arbor Hill and Clinton Avenue housing development that we're looking forward to in the next year or two.
Thank you so much. And before I move on to Jeff, I need to apologize to Susan for calling her Sharon.
It's okay, I've been called worse.
Okay, thanks. Jeff, you're next.
Thanks, Nell. The issue of rising rents and rising mortgage costs in the face of essentially flat incomes is something that is certainly not unique to Albany. This is a problem that cities across the country are facing. And people are being forced to spend a greater percentage of their income just to put a roof over their heads. And I think there are a number of strategies that we can use to try to combat that. Of course, I think that a lot of these solutions would be would be best achieved at the federal level by having the federal government give cities its fair, their fair share of funding. Since the Reagan years, we've been just dramatically, dramatically underserved by the federal government. Locally, we can repeal the tax credit that luxury developers get. We can increase the number, the percentage of truly affordable units within new construction. We can lower the income eligibility requirements for some of this affordable housing. A lot of what's considered affordable is really not affordable. It's affordable maybe if you're a middle-class person, but not if you're truly poor or even working poor. And I also, part of what I'd like to accomplish on the Common Council is the introduction of legislation to revive the Fair Housing Office in Albany, which will investigate and prosecute housing discrimination, which will permit people greater mobility and allow for less racial residential segregation in our city. So I think that's, by opening up the rest of the city and opening up housing here, we would go a long way toward solving some of those issues. Thanks.
Thank you. Gabriella?
Your question.
Question number seven. Residents in the city of Albany are often priced out due to increase in housing costs. What strategies would you employ to encourage them to stay and invest in the city as long-term residents?
Yeah, the strategies that I would implement to allow people to stay within their homes is to move threefold that I think are the most important. One that was touched upon earlier is making sure that our housing is actually affordable. So a way we could do that is change our inclusionary zoning ordinance, which right now says that new developments over 50 units have 5% of units mandated to be put aside as affordable housing. So housing advocates right now are looking at making that percentage more. So new development over 50 units would have maybe 30 or 40% set aside as affordable, but no one's talking about how we define affordable. So I think that is actually a really important factor for us to consider when addressing this issue. Right now, it's at 100% AMI. We need to do it at 30% AMI. 100% AMI means that $900 apartment is affordable, and that just doesn't make sense. And that's something that I see a lot with my clients, that there's no, there's not enough affordable housing. And while the city may think that there is, maybe they need to up their education efforts or up their communication efforts to meet people where they're at, to say, these are your options for you. Something else that I think is important is to allow people to age in place. Something that's really important is that, especially in the Sixth Ward, with these beautiful brownstones that we have, people own these homes and they want to stay here and live their lives here. But as you get older, it's harder for people to live in a multi-level unit. So a specific strategy that I would want to implement to address that is maybe a tax incentive for property owners to allow for mobility devices or safer things within the home that can allow people to age within their own building. Maybe also partnering with nonprofits or city agencies to allow for meal delivery services to people that are in these homes. I think it's really important that everyone's able to enjoy the Sixth Ward for the entirety of their life.
Thank you. Question number eight. And we're gonna start with Gabriella. If elected to the Albany Common Council, what subcommittees would you like to be on? And what initiatives would you pursue on those subcommittees? And I have some examples. General Service, Public Safety, Planning and Economic Development, Finance, et cetera.
Undoubtedly, I would hope to be placed on the Public Safety Committee. I think I'm really uniquely situated as a public defender to identify exactly what needs to happen within our city for these really important public safety reforms. And some of those things, now that I have an opportunity to kind of speak about it, some of those things that I think I'd like to implement in the Common Council and potentially within my first hundred days, if people will have me, is implementing an open and transparent database of police disciplinary records in accordance with the repeal of 50A. So there was a recent law that was passed that allows for all police disciplinary records to be public. Creating an open database for the public would be a massive measure, undoubtedly. But it would allow for a police department to move forward. It would allow them to say, listen, these are all the things that we've done that are considered maybe bad, and we're ready to move forward and we're ready to make this step, because we are at a crossroads right now where something needs to happen, and it needs to happen soon. As a public defender, I see these disciplinary records every single day in the cases that I'm dealing with. And if the public was able to see this on a regular basis, you would be shocked. And honestly, that could cause me a little bit of anxiety sometimes to see it as a public defender and to think that it's so crazy to me that our community doesn't know this and our community doesn't see this. So that would be a wonderful first step that I would love to implement in the Public Safety Committee. Other things are a clear and unamended ban of tear gas. I see I have 30 seconds. Allowing for a program similar to the LEED program that's implemented right now in the city. The LEED is kind of like a franchise that's developed by other agencies. I would like an Albany-specific one that's created by the Albany Police Department, created by important players such as Dr. Alice Green, Mark Michler, and Matt Toparowski, coming together to create a new system of public safety would be wonderful. And creating an Albany-specific program similar to the LEED Department would absolutely revolutionize the way that we handle our city. And I would love to implement that on the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you very much. Jeff, you're next. Would you like me to read the question again?
No, thank you. As long as they don't put me on the golf subcommittee, I'm good with whatever. I hate golf. It's a very frustrating sport. Anyway, I would, I'd like to be on the Law Buildings and Code Enforcement Committee, certainly. I've been a practicing attorney for eight years, and I've had extensive involvement in Albany regarding code enforcement issues, serving on the Board of United Tenants of Albany, became intimately familiar with a small number of slum lords who do tremendous damage to our city. And that's why I've focused a lot of my campaign on talking about code enforcement issues and the need to not only devote more resources to our codes department, but also ensure that there is better follow-up in terms of enforcing violations, in terms of collecting fines from landlords who were violated. And I also would like to serve on either the Public Safety or the Housing and Community Development Committee. Those are both, I think, crucial issues in the community. Housing, for a lot of the same reasons that I discussed in the in explaining why I wanted to be on the Code Enforcement Committee, that also applies to housing and community development. As far as public safety, I think we have a tremendous opportunity to pursue responsible police reform that would involve reallocating the way that money is spent in the Albany Police Department, interacting or changing the way that the police interact with the public, getting social workers involved in responding to police calls. And there's obviously a tremendous amount of work to be done there in our city.
Thank you. Susan? Your turn.
Two of the committees that I'm particularly interested in joining are Planning and Economic Development and the City's Finance Committee. Starting with Planning and Economic Development, I have a great deal of experience in this arena. I served as Director of Economic Development for Albany County, where I created and implemented the county's first comprehensive economic development plan. And in doing so, I had the opportunity to work with the city's planners, with the city's three business improvement districts, and with the many organizations that impact economic development in the city of Albany. When I left that job to go and work for Planned Parenthood, I was recruited to continue my work in economic development on a number of different boards, including the IDA, which I've mentioned before, but also Capital Resource Corporation and Capitalized Albany Corporation. These are commitments that I would probably have to step away from as a Common Council member because of perceived conflicts of interest. However, I wouldn't definitely want to bring the skills and experience that I have in that area to the city and be able to work on legislation to enable our economic development efforts to be maximized and to ensure that we are planning for the strongest possible sustainable development of both our commercial businesses and our residential enterprises. I'd also like to be on the Finance Committee so that I could help to stabilize on the city's budget primarily by working with the state to make pilots, payments in lieu of taxes for the services that the city provides for the state and other non-taxpaying entities that reside and benefit from the many services that we provide.
Thank you very much. And we're gonna start our next question, which is question number nine. And Jeff, you're gonna be first on this one. The Washington Park Playground Design Project was solicit, has solicited recommendations and suggestions from individuals throughout Albany. What playground redesign do you support?
You know, I met with a couple members of the Washington Park Conservancy Board and discussed this. And I basically said, look, I don't have kids. I remember what it was like to play on the playground, but I don't have kids of my own, and I don't feel like I'm really qualified to give any kind of input on this. So, I mean, really, I would want to listen to parents. I would want to listen to kids and see what the kids want. I think that we have a great opportunity to build a really decent playground in Washington Park. The equipment that's been there, that's there now has been there for years. And this is, like I said, I think it's a great opportunity to build a playground that's inviting to children from throughout the city, because Washington Park as a public space should be open to everybody and everybody's children to use. So really, I would, like I said, I would defer to people with greater knowledge and greater investment in this playground than I have personally and would defer to their judgment in this area.
Thank you. Susan?
I have spent many days on the playground in Washington Park with my children and their friends. We are definitely in need of a serious upgrade. We need new and safe equipment. We need benches for parents and families to be able to sit and congregate and watch their children while they are playing. And we need to make sure that people from all over the city feel welcome at this playground and have an input on the design. There's many different playgrounds being developed and redeveloped all over the city right now. And the Washington Park Conservancy has really done an outstanding job of making sure that everybody in the community is being surveyed and involved and has a voice in the direction that this playground will take. We want to make sure that we do not repeat the disaster at the Lincoln Park site, where before the plans were officially reviewed and had complete input from the community, bulldozers came in and were leveling the grounds. They took down trees that were perfectly viable and could have been fit in with the plan for the basketball courts and the playground that was being developed. It was an absolute disaster. And many people in that community are very, very upset and have lost a good degree of trust. But I think that we've learned from that. And I think that here in the Sixth Ward and Washington Park, we have a much better opportunity to move forward with a very inclusive and organized methodology for making sure that everyone can enjoy our playground in Washington Park.
Thank you. Gabriella?
In answering this question, who am I to say what playground is best for children? I do not have kids. I think the best way for us to answer this question would be to ask children, what do they like? Or ask parents, what do they think is best for their children? I would love to have that discussion. I would love to facilitate that discussion. Undoubtedly, and I know that there's an online forum that Washington Park is putting out to families and youth to see what they think. But I wonder if, I don't know this for sure, but I wonder if they are going to children and going to schools, maybe in the neighboring area, asking children, what do you guys think about these designs? Well, that may possibly already be going forward right now. I think it's a really important concept, community involvement, when you're making some type of decision like that that's gonna impact everyone. Something, while we're talking about playgrounds though, that I think is really important is that a few families in the Park South neighborhood have mentioned that the Splash Playground, the playground near the Splash Park in the Lincoln Park area, although not in the Sixth Ward, is something that's been dilapidated and is now going to be removed. That's really sad, and that's something that is kind of unfortunate when the Washington Park is just about to get a new playground. But the playground that's closer to the Park South neighborhood, although in a different ward, is gonna be taken down. That's really disheartening for me to hear. And although not in the ward, I think it's so important that you're still advocating for the families that are here. And if they say that the Seventh Ward Playground is something that's important to them, then we need to address it. And that's something that I'm also looking into too.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sue has a red card up, I think.
Okay. Susan, with your 30 seconds?
I'd just like to answer that question. I think that's a really good point, that children do need to be involved in determining what the playground is going to look like. And fortunately, we've got a very comprehensive And fortunately, we've got a very comprehensive process that not only has involved the children with their own surveys and one-on-one discussions about what they'd like to see. But it actually has a survey that includes um pictorial representations for the kids that are too young to read and answer a survey. And so uh it really has a huge amount of age um diversity. Which will be input, which will be input to determine the outcome. And I think that is a really important factor.
Um, we have um background noise with you, Susan, when you're talking. I'm not sure where it's coming from. And Gabriella, um, you need to speak closer to the microphone. Um, so it can be heard better. All right. Thank you so much for your, for your answers. Um, and we're gonna go on to question number ten. And um Susan, you're gonna start the question. And um um, do you believe that the Black Lives Matter protests have been occurring in Albany, have been handled properly by the Police Department and the City Administration? If not, what policy changes would you recommend?
Can you hear me clearly now?
Um, still the background noise.
Susan, it's the same thing that, that was happening last night, the, the uh, uh distortion.
Okay. Um, but go ahead. We can hear you. It's just like that underline thing going on that you probably can't do anything about, so. You can go ahead and answer the question.
Okay, thank you. Um, I marched in the Black Lives Matter marches last summer and I think that I saw both our community and our Police Department at its best in the marches that were held earlier in the day. Um, the community was being respectful, um though angry and rightly so about the situation and um that was going on nationally and that we need to recognize and acknowledge in our own community. The police were being very respectful of the marchers, even when we were expressing our frustration and our anger. Um, but as the night went on, things clearly changed. The police response to the activities later in the evening was not appropriate. It was an oversized expression of of violence, of really using violence against our own community, um which is unacceptable. We need to find better ways to deal with de- escalation.
I'm sorry. Gabriella.
I think Susan has joined us again. If you wanna um let her finish her, her response. I see that she's joined us again. I'm just not sure, um.
I don't, I don't see her. It's like she.
Okay, if you can hear me, I'm going to try to relocate.
Oh, there you are.
So I will jump back in, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you. My apologies.
She sounds good now.
Yeah, you sound great, yeah. The, the static is gone, whatever it was is gone. We just can't, we just can't see your face right now, but we saw it before, so we remember what you look like.
Great, thank you. Um, so um yes, in conclusion, um the uh steps that the police took um both last summer and this spring were not appropriate um for the community's outrage. We cannot answer people who are concerned that they are not being heard, um are concerned that they are not being respected with disrespect. And we saw a great deal of that in both of those situations. And I think that some of the police reform efforts um do address that and we need to move forward so that we can regain the trust of the community.
Okay, thank you so much for your answer. And next we'll go to Gabriella. Do you need me to repeat the question? Do you believe that the Black Lives Matter protests that have been occurring in Albany have been handled properly by the Police Department and the City Administration? If not, what policy changes would you recommend?
That's a great question now. Uh, to answer it simply, no, the Police Department has not responded to the, the Black Lives Matter protests. And at no point was there a proper apology. At no point was there an uplifting of black voices and an appreciation of black voices within our community. I was so disappointed in the way that our city handled the South Station occupation. Um, I was there. I have friends that um have video showing police beating up other people. And so when our city's leadership says that everything was okay, that uh, that the way that it was handled um was according to police policy, that is incorrect and it's propaganda and it's really terrifying. It's really, really scary to see that. Um, when I saw police officers with blue Lives Matters signs on their shields, that's terrifying. Is the city budget going towards that? I hope not. Uh, it was really, really scary to watch that happen at the South Station um unfurling of events because it just shows that what happened last summer did not have any effect on the Police Department. Uh, we are in a place right now that it's so important that we make real, sustainable and effective change because this will not change. This will, this will keep continuing. It will keep going on. I see it in these disciplinary records in my cases. I continue to see it on the news and I continue to see it in my own community activism, um walking in solidarity with, with the Black Lives Matter movement and with these activists. And um and I think I'm just about to be out of time, but I just wanna reiterate that no, they did not handle it properly and it was actually kind of disappointing and kind of scary the way the city handled it.
Thank you for your answer. Jeff, you're next.
I, I think, I think it depends on the protest. There were some protests that went off without a hitch. I mean, the, the, there were protests practically every night, sometimes smaller, sometimes larger. And a lot of those went off without issue, uh either, either from the protesters or from the police. And then there were some, some other protests and, and events that um things did not go well. And the, the police uh did not handle the situation appropriately. I, last summer, there was uh, there was tear gas used. I support banning use of tear gas in the city of Albany. I uh have, have tuned into a number of the Common Council meetings where that has been discussed. And uh I've really taken some cues from, from Council Member Joyce Love. Uh, she is a uh, a black councilwoman from the third ward and she said that she's uneasy with passing tear gas legislation in its current form because she's afraid that the police will resort to using lethal force uh on her community. And that was very powerful to me when, when I heard her speak about that. Uh, so I think we need to identify and uh put in legislation identifying what alternatives we would use to that. Um, in the, the South Street, uh, or, or excuse me, the South End protests. Um, I think the city made a mistake in allowing people to set up tents in the middle of the street. Uh, and I also think the Police Department, I think they were way out of line when they were shutting down the, the protests by covering their badge numbers. Um, that's inexcusable and those officers should be held accountable for, for covering their badge numbers because it's a complete betrayal of the public trust.
Thank you so much. I see a red card from Gabriella.
I had to use a red card. This is so um important, uh, and it's something that we can't stay silent on. Allowing for there to be amendment to the ban on tear gas um and saying that uh if you ban tear gas, it will force police officers to use lethal force completely misconstrues the whole concept of police brutality and the movement that we're going through right now. And it really upsets me when people say that because there are actual de-escalation techniques in the police handbook. And let me give you an example. When there's a large crowd of people, I see that says stop, but I really have to finish this, this phrase very quickly. When you see that there's a group of people, you're able to identify the people that you, that you see have the possibility of being violent and you target them. And then you go in as a police department and you identify what that violence and what that potential uh weapon is, and then you remove it. That's called de-escalation techniques and that's in the handbook and that's something that we can fund and research and give more money to. But saying that you have to ban tear gas because there's no other alternatives and that we will have to be forced to be using lethal force is just incorrect and, and not right. So I just need to correct that really quick.
Thank you for sharing. Um, question number eleven. We'll start with um Susan. And it, what specific measures would you propose to reduce the overall crime rate in the city of Albany, including steps to address the increase in gun violence in Albany?
Well, can you hear me? Am I clear right now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so we need to take a holistic approach to reducing crime and gun violence in our city. Um, there's not a single solution, but there are many different access points at which we must be working with people who may have um the opportunity um and the um reason they feel a reason to obtain and use guns. Um, one of the things that we need to do is to make sure that we're working with our youth. And we have a great opportunity to do that through our Department of Parks and Recreation and through our city's school district as well as through after-school programs. Young people are most likely to commit a crime between the hours of three and six P M. When school is out and parents and guardians are, often are not home. They are also most likely to be the victims of crime during those hours. So we have a very serious situation here and we do not have enough after-school programs and activities for kids to participate in after-school. So that's um one thing that we need to do early on. Um, specifically with regard to addressing um the prolific um amount of guns that have come into our city. Um, we need more than just the Safe Act. We need national legislation that will ensure that guns are not coming into our community from other states and from other places. We need to work to reduce the number of guns on our street as well as the incentive of people to be able to use those guns.
Thank you. Jeff? Do you need me to repeat the question?
Oh, oh, no, thank you, no. I, I, I agree with, with what Susan just said. We need, we need strong federal legislation to, to address this issue. Uh, I think it's unfortunately pretty much a pipe dream in terms of our, our current uh makeup of, of our federal government, but there's direct research that links the availability and prevalence with firearms to the amount of violence that occurs in communities. And that's both, both in terms of uh, of attempted murders, murders as well as suicides. Um, there's a um, there, there's a, a, an approach that I've been researching lately and I think holds a lot of promise for our city. And it's called focus deterrence. And what focus deterrence is, is uh a way to try to identify who are the people in our community who are most likely to be both the perpetrators as well as the victims of gun violence. And uh, this has been attempted in places like Boston, Massachusetts and in Oakland, California. In these cities, they narrowed it down to a couple hundred people, a few hundred people. We're talking less than half a percent of the city's population who are most likely to be uh perpetrators of gun violence. And many of these individuals are uh already under the supervision of probation, parole or the like. And there's um an opportunity to reach those folks and act proactively in terms of offering them services that will keep them out of trouble, such as housing, job training, uh counseling, education. And uh, the, the, the result of using these approaches in those cities was that the homicide rate plummeted and the homicide solve rate also went up dramatically. So it's going to require a lot of focus, a lot of commitment, a lot of buy-in from a lot of stakeholders, but I think we need to look at a more holistic approach uh like that focus deterrence approach to solve the problems that we have in our city right now.
Thank you. Gabriella.
I think Jeff, Susan and I are on the same page with um how to address gun violence and the fact that it's a multifaceted issue that is, does not just have one answer. Um, allowing for uh more legislation at the state and federal level is undoubtedly something that we can advocate for as members of the Common Council and lobbying for those things is important. Um, but I think another way for us to address uh crime rates in general too, um kind of uh outside of gun violence is uh also changing the way we see our Police Department and changing what is criminalized um and how we criminalize certain things. Uh, there's a new um suggestion in the Common Council that I'm really excited about and it creates an Albany Public Safety Commission. So it'll change um the way we actually police things, uh putting law enforcement and community safety on two different sides uh, uh of the sphere. And law enforcement will handle traffic concerns and penal code violations, which are what you and I know as, as like crimes. And then the community safety and oversight will handle community safety um and uh these uh kind of quality of life type things, uh which in my understanding is not gonna be a police at all. It would be someone that you can just talk to and say like, hey, there's this issue and they will actually go fix it. Um, something that I also touched on before, uh, which I think is important because we can't criminalize the behavior. We have to allow someone to address what's actually happening and why they're, why they're experiencing this type of crim- criminal conduct and giving them access to services, kind of like what Jeff said earlier about gun violence. Addressing all of our city's criminal conduct in that same framework uh would allow us to be a more empathetic and more whole and positive community.
Thank you very much. Um, question number twelve. It's gonna go to um Jeff first. And um it's what are the greatest challenges you see facing the Latino, Latinx community in the city of Albany? And how will you address them if you're elected?
Sure. So um we have a, a somewhat small but growing Latina community in, in our city and in our area. I uh, I, I think that one thing I, I see a lot and um in my own, in my own work, my, my professional life as well as in the community, um is, is the language barrier, that there aren't adequate available interpretive services for Spanish-speaking individuals. Um, I, I think that that, that is something that needs to be looked at closely. Um, I also think that uh in terms of uh recent immigrants, whether they be documented or undocumented, um, I do support the idea of uh a sanctuary city. I think that um i- i- it's, I don't think the best uh, the best name. I, I think we could do better in terms of um labeling what a sanctuary city actually is. It's really uh, uh the ability of the city of Albany to uh separate um, you know, a civil immigration enforcement from the, the criminal justice system. And when, when we do that and we won't uh, we won't seek to deport and penalize undocumented immigrants, uh, it allows for better public safety because you have more buy-in from those communities and more willingness in those communities to speak up when crimes are being perpetrated. Uh, so I, I, I think that um To to continue to pursue a sanctuary city policy would be helpful to to Latino community here. Uh, as well as the entire city uh because it's it's just sound public policy.
Thank you. Susan.
So one of the major challenges facing the Latino community is the same challenge that's facing much of our community, which is. Um, the inability to access good jobs, um largely because of the systemic racism that we see in so many of our systems. I was really pleased to see our local labor community come together um two weeks ago. Um, to develop a MAP program in the city of Albany. Um, that is a multi-craft apprenticeship preparation program. And this will enable uh people of many different cultures, many different races, many different income levels. To get the skills that they need to prepare for a career in the trades. Um, just qualifying for an apprentice program. In a particular uh within a particular union. Um, can be a barrier to so many people who don't have transportation, who don't have job skills, who may have language barriers. Um, and this MAP program will help to hopefully level the playing field. So that more people can take advantage of the good jobs, um, unionized jobs. Um, and benefits that are provided by people who are represented by unions locally.
Thank you. Gabriella.
This is an interesting question. I am Latina, I'm Puerto Rican, but I can't assume to know the problems. Uh, or even the main problems of the Latinx community. Um, what I've observed from being a public defender is that there are problems with language uh and accessibility in that way. I speak Spanish, uh, but if I'm not around, uh, my office does not have anyone that speaks Spanish around them. Um, having more uh language accessibility in that way maybe um encouraging funding or a budget line for. City and county level employees that uh are able to speak different languages is something that would be really, really helpful for the Latinx community. Um, but not all Latinx are strictly Spanish-speaking. Um, a lot of people Latinx in this community are were born here. Um, uh, and and speak only English. So by classifying something as a Latinx community, I think maybe we're talking more about. Um, systemic racism and and a racism type issue i- within our city. Um, and that's on that token, uh, I guess. We've already kind of discussed the systemic racism issues within our police department, but uh Sue also brings up a really good point about their labor force. Um, and allowing for uh better jobs and and um. More inclusive and equal opportunities to everyone. Uh, I don't necessarily, oh, and it looks like I'm pretty much out of time. I'll I'll end right there.
Thank you. And so we're going to start question number thirteen. And we're going to start with Susan. And it, the question reads and it's some questions within some questions. Alright, so we'll see how it goes. What role do you see the focus and the four focus churches located in Center Square? And improving life for Center Square residents within the sixth ward? Focus has a breakfast program and food pantry. Do you have other suggestions for critically needed services? Do you view these programs positively? Do these programs present any challenges for neighborhood residents? That's four questions in one.
Our focus churches do a tremendous job of serving the community. Um, my first experience with the focus church um was my very first community garden when I moved. To Lancaster Street. Uh, we had a plot at the Hudson Jay Park uh gardens. And at that point in time, the focus churches managed those gardens. Um, in our contract that we signed when we paid our ten dollars to have access to those plots. We agreed to invite um children in particular um in the community to come in to help it to help us plant. Um, to invite them and involve them in watering and growing the food. And then to share that food with them um at harvest time. Uh, we had some really wonderful experiences, meeting a a lot of different people, not only in the garden, but people who would just pass by. And children who would come in to take advantage of that um opportunity. We shared food with them. We shared experiences. Um, and I thought it was really a great setup. At the end of the growing season, the focus churches also asked you to give any um produce that you could spare. Uh, to donate that to the churches for their food pantry. Um, and meal distribution um programs and that worked really well. Uh, I would love for the focus churches to get involved in that. Uh, again, it's the gardens have now um are now all. Um, managed by Capitol District Community Gardens who also do a good job but have a much wider focus. And so I would love to see um the focus churches get back involved in this. On the positive side, the focus churches are developing their own garden. They'll be doing that this weekend and planting. Um, at Trinity Church, um, a garden that will be used to help to provide fresh food. Um, for those food programs that they do such a great job with.
Thank you. Gabriella.
Do you repeat the question? Question?
What role do you see the focus? And the four focus churches located in Center Square and improving life. For Center Square residents within the sixth ward. Focus has a bre- Let me do that again. What role do you see the focus and the four focus churches located in Center Square and proven life? For the Center Square residents. Within the sixth ward, focus has a breakfast program, a food pantry. Do you have other suggestions for critically needed services? Do you view these programs positively? Do these programs present any challenges for neighborhood residents?
Faith-based organizations play a really wonderful role in in our in our community uh and they undoubtedly give. Very positive uh programs and um opportunities to six-word residents and to people in the city of Albany. Um, in addition to the uh food pantry program, I know that the churches also provide clothing. Um, and uh furniture and just as a concept of mutual aid. Uh, and a direct action and like people-powered neighborhood coalitions is something that I think is really wonderful with the. Uh, organization of churches within the sixth ward. Um, I've been able to help out with uh just connecting. People within congregations with furniture or uh with food and I've always been greeted with a really wonderful smile and. Uh, a really positive outlook on um how we can kind of work together and increase uh community kind of involvement together. Um, when I think about their role, uh, I think faith-based systems have a wonderful role within our community. Um, by, like I said, providing all of those programs. Um, and I would love to continue to partner with them and uh. I think their role is just to have being a bastion of positive energy, really. Uh, when I think about um the challenges that they present to the city, um, I don't see any challenges there. Although when I was speaking to um the pastor for the church on Chestnut Street. She did mention some issues with the um historic foundation and some uh. Improvements that were happening to the building, so I would hope to maybe partner and and provide a discussion between those two organizations. To figure out how churches can, um, the churches in the sixth ward can continue to stay uh beautifully historic while also not being hit with. Um, extreme costs by the historic uh preservation groups as well.
Thank you. Jeff?
I'm not gonna make you repeat that question.
Okay.
Um, if I were, if I were in court, I would object to that right away. Compound question. But uh, anyway, I think it's. Um, I I I love the focus churches. I I used to work with them. Uh, when I was in homeless services and um they are. I I think just some wonderful people who provide services to people in our community who really need it. The the focus uh Breakfast Club Food Pantry has been operating for, I I don't know, probably decades. They've been around forever. Um, I remember working with Reverend Deb when she was, when she was there for for many years. Uh, and now the the sixth ward's own Heather Kirk Davidoff, who's I see is is on this call. Uh, she and her husband Dan are are wonderful community members and um have have brought some some great energy and. Uh, passion to to our city. They're they're an example of of people who moved here from elsewhere. And have just been wonderful contributors to our community since. Um, I uh, I I fully support the work of of the focus churches. They've been inspirational to me. Um, when I I see um religious organizations that uh are focused on on really. Putting Christian values into practice, um, feeding the poor, caring about your fellow man. Um, you know, that's that really resonates with me and that's that's how I I've tried to live my life. Um, so, you know, they they inspired me when I was younger and they continue to inspire me today. And uh, I hope they have a a continued long life here in our neighborhood.
Thank you. And question number fourteen. Um. And Gabriella, you're gonna start that one. Lights in the park has become controversial. How would you resolve this controversy? Would you support limiting the the vet to pedestrian only?
I would remove lights in the park from Washington Park um for many reasons. One, the presence of. The event in the park itself has gotten completely out of hand um and has become too large for the space. Uh, when it first originated um years ago, it was a much smaller event and and um it is just not that anymore. And I do say this statement with an asterisk in that when I was a young child, I loved lights in the park. Like I really did. I I've asked any of my family or my friends, I love Christmas stuff. Uh, but it's it's gotten to the point where uh the community and the neighborhood itself is is um. Overwhelmingly in support of removing it from the park. So in addition to the space issue. Um, the fact that there are uh electrical wires that are kind of going through the park itself with no understanding of where they are. Is also a massive problem. Um, it takes up space in the park where we should be able to enjoy it. Uh, snow shoeing, um, you know. Just uh cross-country skiing, uh, just general Christmas like wintertime frolicking. You're not able to do that because it's congested with cars. Uh, and large uh light fixtures. So um, all of those reasons. In and of themselves on their own should be a reason to move it out. But also some things that people aren't really focusing on are the fact that it uses jail labor, which is a concept that is um predatory and negative. Uh, and the organization that receives the money, PAL, is a police-related organization. Um, that I personally think uh has some issues with their finances. When I personally um pulled their tax filings for the past ten years. Um, it's clear that there are some issues there and that's something that I think we need to address as well, that has not been a part of the narrative. And I don't really understand why people aren't talking about that more. But there are reasons that the lights in the park should be not only moved out of the park, um, but changed.
Thank you. Jeff?
Uh, I I support moving lights in the park out of Washington Park uh for for a number of reasons, but I think we we need to keep in mind that this is. This is an area that's squarely within the the control of the mayor's office. Um, the common council really isn't going to be able to do anything in terms of uh this this, what is essentially a permitting question. Uh, whether or not this permit should be granted again for this year by the city. Um, but to go on record, yes, I I I support moving lights in the park for a number of reasons. Um, for one, emergency vehicles couldn't get through this past year. Uh, I heard that on one occasion, an ambulance was unable to get down Madison Ave to New Scotland to the hospitals for over twenty-five minutes. This is unacceptable for a number of reasons. Um, there's also the question of pedestrian access. Uh, Washington Park is a a public park. It's something that should be open to all people. And instead, it's being monopolized by one organization for essentially a third of the year. Um, this is uh, again, I think unacceptable. Um, but before I I took a firm position on on this, uh, I spoke with a number of the local businesses. I- in the sixth ward and they've been emphatic that the lights don't bring them any benefit at all. That people drive in to the lights from from the suburbs, drive through the park and then go home. Um, our businesses don't receive any residual benefit from that. Uh, and also the the environmental effects of lights in the park uh have been quite detrimental to to our city's crown jewel. Um, there there's emissions from thousands of idling cars, the vast use of electricity, the stress placed on our infrastructure. Um, broken and frayed wires throughout the park and damage to the trees, bushes and grass. Um, the 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 numbers are, the 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 issues are innumerable and uh I I I certainly support stopping. Lights in the park in Washington Park.
Thank you. Gabriella. I'm sorry. My eyes are going wild on me. It's Susan's turn.
Lights in the park was a good program that has outgrown its setting in Washington Park. It is simply too big and brings too much traffic to our neighborhood and needs to be relocated if it is to continue. When lights in the park started, and I remember this clearly, it was shortly after I moved um to my new home. There were only thirty light displays. Traffic was minimal and neighbors still had consistent access to the park. Now there are more than a hundred and twenty light displays that tie up the park for months. For those of us who live in the sixth ward, um, when the tulip bulbs start coming up in the spring, we get very excited. We know that Tulip Fest is coming and the weather is getting better, um, and we have a lot to look forward to. But in the fall, the exact opposite happens in Washington Park now. Because we see the orange-taped electrical figures seeming to emerge from the ground. And we know what we are in for. More traffic congestion, unsafe and restricted use of our own park. And unsafe emissions due to the idling of too many cars into smaller space. This is especially disconcerting because Albany has a disproportionately high rate of asthma. Um, we also have a large number of families that are now now beginning to move into the homes around Washington Park. And we have been trying to develop the park as a year-round place for people to exercise and enjoy the outdoors year-round. Um, we are facing tremendous impediments to doing that and accomplishing those healthy. Um, and safe goals that we've set. Um, and so we must remove lights in the park. Um, in its current configuration.
Thank you very much. And this will be our last question. Um, for the evening. Question number fifteen. And we will start with Gabriella. Do you think the city of Albany education system needs to be changed? And if so. Do you see a role for the council?
Most school issues uh are dealt with but with the school board, so um undoubtedly, I. Um, would advocate at at least the state level uh to make sure that our school system and our our. Public school system is fully funded. I think that's really important and that's um across the board, something that is uh needed. Um, I in speaking with multiple neighbors, everyone loves their public schools. Uh, I, like I said, I I don't have children, but um when I do have children and I have a home in the sixth ward, I will undoubtedly send them to Albany Public Schools. Uh, but um, when I speak to other neighbors about this issue, uh, like I said before, it's not really under the purview of the common council. Um, but I would lobby our state legislators to make sure that we are getting the funding that we need to make sure that the public schools are funded. That being said, although not formally within the purview of the school system, the city itself creates youth-based programs and youth engagement and civic youth engagement specifically is something that I would really like to bring to our city. When we talk about the summer youth employment program, I would love to have a specific carve-out just for civic engagement. Internships in the mayor's office, internships with the city auditor. Why are we not allowing for our city's youth to have a presence within our city's leadership? I think that's something that's really, really exciting to me, and I hope to bring that to the council. Because when children are able to see how things work in their government, that gives, kind of gives them like a different framework, and it may be an excitement and maybe a love and appreciation for their city. So although not necessarily within the purview of the school, I think that's something that I'd love to bring to youth engagement in our city.
Thank you. Jeff?
Sure. So the, the common council doesn't have any, any authority or any oversight over the school district, and neither does the mayor's office for that matter. And in my opinion, that's, that's a good thing to keep the schools from becoming too politicized and trying to keep the focus where it belongs, which is, is on, on the kids, on our, on our children in the city of Albany. And I, I like Gabriella's idea of incorporating some, some internship opportunities within the city of Albany. I think that, you know, we have a, we have a, a, a city government that takes on a variety of diverse roles and to, to pair students in departments or with specific employees to let them gain some firsthand and, and on-hands experience in something that they might be interested in pursuing in a career is something that I, I think is definitely worth pursuing. So, yeah, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
I think we do have a role to play in the schools, and it's primarily a collaborative one. My two children both attended Albany Public Schools, and they participated in the city's summer youth employment program. They both worked in a number of different city offices over the years and gained a number of different skills. In years when they wanted to work outside, they were often placed in the parks, sometimes cleaning up parks, sometimes coaching sports teams for younger students, developing leadership skills. They even had the opportunity to go through an entrepreneurship training in which they were taught as part of their job how to formulate a business and learned about the different types of businesses and the different types of incorporation methods that there are. So they gained not only good habits for how to approach a job, how to step up from one year to the next to positions of more important, but they also gained critical leadership skills. Also, our, our schools partner with our Department of Parks and Recreation and have a really strong collaboration. I mentioned before the dangers of not having after-school programs available to students. And our Department of Parks and Recreation does provide services and activities for our students that keep them engaged and interested and occupied and feeling part of the community through the summer months and the hours after school. Also, I was part of a, of, of the founding board, which started the Albany Lacrosse Team. And we had our very first Albany Lacrosse Team graduate a couple of years ago from Albany High School. And when we were starting that, we went to the Department of Parks and Recreation, and they actually taught the children during the summer at, at, at younger ages how to-
Thank you.
-use lacrosse stick.
Your time is up. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. And so now, it's time for your closing remarks. And, and we're just going to go backwards. Susan's going to be first, Jeff will be second, and Gabriella will be third. You have two minutes for your closing remarks.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think I'll take the opportunity to finish up what I had started talking about because it's such an important part of developing our youth and bringing our community together, which was the example of the Albany Lacrosse Team. Albany High School wanted to build and develop their very first lacrosse team. It's a growing sport with a lot of opportunities for college scholarships and also a great opportunity to bring students from all over the schools together. So the initial programs were developed by the city's Department of Youth and Recreation so that the younger students, as they came through the grades, as they came from grade school to middle school to high school, they were ready to join the lacrosse team and to have a lot more fun because they had a little more experience rather than going out cold on the field. Again, students from other schools who had been, as the, the kids used to say, born with lacrosse sticks in their hand in the suburban, some of the suburban schools that they played against. So it's really been a growing experience for our whole community, and I'm really proud of the young men and women who were the initiators of that program. It's a great example of how our whole city comes together when we take the best of all of the services that the city of Albany has to offer, when we utilize the resources that we can obtain as the state capital as well. We have a lot of people who are active and involved and want the best for our city and our community and really know how to use the system and how to come together to ensure that we can draw down the resources that we need to address the problems that we see and to make our city a better place to live.
Thank you. Jeff?
I, I don't, I, I think I've said enough. Just thank you, legal women voters and, and the other partner agencies for, for hosting this. Nell, you've, you've been a great moderator, and I want to thank the other candidates for, I think, was a very good and, and productive and respectful conversation about some, some issues facing our city. So thanks, everybody, and have a good night.
Thank you. Gabriella?
So I would also like to close just by thanking everyone. We were talking before the, the Zoom started about how weird it is to have these electronic forums, but also how wonderful, which allows for more people to access this information and come back to it later, and it's recorded and it'll be around forever. So that's cool, but also maybe a little scary. But I guess, just in closing, I'm so excited and invigorated by this campaign. I love this neighborhood. I love this city. I was born here. The only place that I've chosen to live after college was coming right back to Albany Law School to make sure I was in Albany. And immediately after I graduated, I, I was in this community, and I've been here ever since. I can't wait to own a home here. I can't wait to raise children here. This part of the city is really the best part. Obviously, we're biased, but it's everything the city has to offer, and I love it so much. And I, I hope I have the opportunity to represent the sixth ward on the next common council because this race and being a leader and being a representative, it's not about me. It's about the community and the people and the exciting coalitions and conversations that we've created by, by running a campaign and by being strong in our beliefs and not backing down. And I guess, really in closing, I want everyone to think, and I say this a lot, but I want everyone to think about what type of leader you want to represent you right now. Like, who and what do you want to represent you? Because we're about to enter a part in history, not to sound dramatic, but a part in Albany's history where we're going to have so many really important changes happening, and no one wants timid or shy leadership. I'm so excited to be a leader that is going to stand up for what you want, but someone that's also going to listen and that's going to be there. And I've given so many people my phone number, so I, I want you to use that. And I've said a lot of things, too. I, I am, I am unapologetic in how I feel, but-
And now, your time is up. We thank you so much for participating. We thank you for, for all your confidence in yourselves and the fact that you're out there running and being able to do the things that you do. We thank the legal, legal women voters for their service. And I thank the legal women voters for allowing me to participate in this way this evening. And I also want to give a shout out to the other partners who helped to sponsor this. Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you so much.
Good night. Thank you.